We can do it.
Okay, he's good.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay, we will call the meeting to order for the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, October 13th. Time is 7:05 PM. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, subsection 20 relating to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak emergency, the October 13, 2027 PM Norfolk School Committee meeting held live at Norfolk Town Hall, Room 24, shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternate public access to the meeting shall be done through NCTV. Thank you. This application will allow users to view the live meeting. Questions and comments submitted prior to the meeting will be read by the chair during the open public comment. The meeting will be recorded for a future broadcast by Norfolk Community Television. Questions and comments can be submitted to schoolcommitteequestions@norfolk.k12.ma.us. Questions for the school committee must be submitted prior to 3 PM on the day of the meeting in order for them to be read at the meeting. And as we start out every meeting, we'll do the mission statement, which is, "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires life on learners, cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Call, please.
Sarah Ward.
Shannon Meneses.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Madora Champagne.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Alardi.
In the public comment, I don't believe we have anything. And then for correspondence, we have a donation to vote on. It's a total of $4,822. That breaks down to $4,222 from the ELS Foundation, and that is for the COVID Rapid Response Grants. That was a district-wide grant. And then a donation from Michael Klein, an amount of $600, which was a donation to Freeman Kennedy. So do we have a motion to accept both of those generous donations in the amount of the $4,822?
I move that we accept the donations totaling $4,822.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay. Assuming no further discussion beyond a thank you after both of those things, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Very generous.
Much appreciated. And then moving on to my portion of the evening, we need a voting delegate, excuse me, for the Mass School Committee Conference that is coming up. And this is 6th of November, do I have that date correct?
Yes.
Yes. So I guess, first off, A will need a motion on that before we're there, and then obviously we just discuss it from there as far as who wants to potentially be the person to go. But do we have a motion?
I believe it's going to be virtual this year, which might make it easier for people to participate.
That makes it a little bit easier then for people. I guess, if anyone off the top of their head, would they be able to participate on that date?
Is it really a 3:15?
That's the voting. So the way it works is there's a full, actually, there's usually a few days, like two days usually, of seminars and presentations and revelry, and then the actual voting happens at the end of the, it's usually a Friday, right? It's the end of the Friday session. And so the vote-
The end of the business, right? Is when the vote is?
Yes, then when it's right between business and party. I think last year there was karaoke. I came home.
You have to go to all of it, and so the revel, all, you don't-
You don't.
Previous part or just the voting?
You could just go to the voting. You can go to one day of the conference if you choose to. They'll publish the agenda and the workshops being offered. We should have that actually within the next couple of days, I would think.
Which, and they were, so I went last year and the year before, and I know Ingrid goes each year, right? And some of the stuff is, it's really beneficial. Sometimes they also dovetail like the charting the course classes into it a little bit as well, but it was great. I went to a seminar last year about how to sort of effectively work with town, you know, as a school committee member, working with other boards and agencies that lead the town and sort of foster communication and sort of the development of good relationships, things like that. It was interesting.
It's jointly sponsored by the Association for School Committees and the Association for Superintendents, and it's all workshops that relate to the role and responsibilities of the committee. There's a lot of times legislative updates, things about-
There's always a good one about the role of the chair, so if you want to usurp Tom X.
You come back, all of a sudden, says a criticism. You're doing this wrong and this wrong and this wrong. That's what Madora did last year.
Mask says you should do this.
That's what we should be doing.
It's usually a good conference. They usually have great keynote speakers, so it's a good conference. And then the voting is on bylaws and operational business for MASC. So we needed a voting delegate and then an alternate.
If somebody else would be interested in doing it to see what it's like, I have no personal, I just don't know if I could get work off.
That's what I'll be interested too. I just wouldn't, the workshops and such, I just want to see if they'd coincide, but I'd be interested.
I would happily serve as the alternate if one of you wants to say you want to do it and then finds out you cannot for some reason. I'm happy to do it again, but I'm also more than happy to give somebody else a chance to-
I'm happy to go too. That's not a long weekend, right? I don't think it's-
It's, the conference is usually a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
So I would go Fri-, yeah. I could go a day. I could, I could take a personal, because I think it's beneficial.
Yeah, if you, or-
Yeah. So we can-
Well, I think we need to-
Between the three of us, one of us, we have to vote on who-
You have to vote, because we have to notify them of who is the voting delegate.
I don't, nobody's ever wanted to do it other than-
Yeah, and then I'm confused.
I mean, well, I never-
We could go arm wrestling if you want it all that way.
I'll lose. It's up to you, honestly. You can, you can be the delegate, that's totally fine. You don't want to add it to, you could go represent KP and-
I'm not doing anything.
I, I can get the day off, but I want you to feel like if you want, you know, you're very interested in all of this, I probably, not that I know a lot of it, but I can wrap my head around a lot of this stuff.
Shannon, you think you'd be able to go at least some of it, you think?
I think so. I mean, I have a pretty, yes, I have a pretty flexible schedule. I just don't think I'd be able to do Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
No, and I don't think any of our committee members has ever done that.
It would be like the three-minute mile.
You do two days, you do two?
No, I wouldn't, I would usually just go Friday.
All right, yeah, that's what I was thinking, one day.
An idea would be Shannon is the main person, if she runs into bind, then Jen can help her out then, right? Does that make sense? Do I have her as the alternate?
Right, and we could switch it. We had to, right?
Or the arm wrestling, I'm happy with either.
Okay.
Sanitize and let, you know.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that works. Good for me.
Okay. So then we would need a motion to have Shannon as the primary person and then Jen as the alternate, and then also second on that.
I move that we nominate and approve Shannon Meneses as the voting delegate to the mask conference with Jennifer Nguyen as the backup voting delegate to the mask conference.
I agree. Second.
Second? Second from Sarah. I assume no further discussion.
Unless you want us to arm wrestle.
She'll win.
Take her for the after-party at the conference. Karaoke.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you both for doing that.
She has really good swag this year since it's virtual.
Did usually get a tote bag.
Yeah, that's just, you sign it as the chair, and then we send it to MASC.
Doesn't need the date. Okay. And then we move on to here.
Yeah, and actually, because we had several meetings over the summer, I have less to update you on, because we just met a couple of weeks ago. But start, the first is the flu shot clinic. Annually, we always provide a flu shot clinic for employees and their families. Because of the demand this year, we are splitting it into two different Wednesdays, and in partnership with Walgreens, would be offering the flu shot on October 14th, 2020, at H. Olive Day, and a second clinic on October 21st at Freeman Kennedy School, holding both clinics between 2:00 and 4:30. Oh, sorry. And per policy, in order to partner with Walgreens to run this flu clinic, we need a vote of the school committee approving the partnership. So I'm seeking a vote from the flu committee to allow Walgreens to offer flu shot clinics for staff on the dates defined.
Did you say vote from the flu committee?
Did I?
Yes.
As vice chair of the flu committee-
From the school committee to offer the flu clinic.
I move that we approve-
Don't start rumors, that's all we need.
I don't need to be on-
We're not the flu committee.
I move that we approve the partnership with Walgreens to provide the flu shot clinics on October 14th and October 21st as stated.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I just want to update you on school reopening since we last met. We, I'm happy to report that we had a very smooth opening of schools on September 14th. Our kids were really excited to be back and settled in very quickly into their classrooms. We had a lot of staff available to help kids find their classrooms, make sure everybody was comfortable and knew where they were going. It went very well. The buses arrived on time, you know, a few minutes behind on some of the routes, but they're learning new routes, so that's expected the first week of school. We started the school year with 108 of our students learning remotely, and the remaining students, 824 students in the hybrid in-person learning model. Since school started, between the opening of school September 14th and now, we have had seven additional students transition into school into the hybrid model. So we now have 101 students learning remotely and 831 students attending school. The safety and health procedures that we've put in place are working very well. Parents have been really good about keeping kids home if they have any cold symptoms or are not feeling well. They work very closely with the nurse to review what symptoms students are presenting with. We have recommended several students, based on the symptoms, go forward and have testing done. Parents have been very compliant with that and have taken care of bringing kids to their pediatrician or to another area location to be tested for COVID. At this time, we have had no positive cases in the schools of students or staff members since school has opened. We have continued to work with students and emphasize the importance of social distancing. I think they're doing really well with that. They definitely do need continued reminders and a lot of supervision during recess time because it's a new norm for them and they're getting used to that. We have worked with grade-level teams to identify some additional materials that might be helpful. With the grant funding that we received from Michael Klein that you voted to accept earlier today, we're using that to purchase resource, resources and equipment for recess. Basketballs, hula hoops, sidewalk chalk. There was a group of kids outside yesterday doing a math lesson on the side, not yesterday, but last week, doing a math lesson on the sidewalk with sidewalk chalk. So teachers are teaching outside at times and making sure kids get scheduled mask breaks. All of our staff are submitting a daily COVID screening before they arrive to work. The nurses are monitoring and making sure that everybody's completed that COVID screening. So today, as I said, we have had no positive cases in the school, and our protocols are becoming pretty seamless and kids are adapting very well. At the current time, we have decided we are not going to move forward with filling a .5 math specialist vacancy. Instead, we're going to be hiring a full-time remote learning support teacher who would be available to students during the remote learning days if they need extra support or help, probably through grade-level office hours for reteaching, review, answering questions about assignments. So we have advertised that position today, and we're continuing to recruit for that. Our food service program continues to provide free meals to all students, and that is also through the grant that you accepted earlier today through the EOS Foundation. We provide the grab-and-go lunches on Wednesdays, and the demand has significantly increased. So the first week of school, we were giving about 130 to 135 lunches out every Wednesday. This past Wednesday, we gave out over 230. So the demand is still there, and it's going very well. We also worked really closely with the rec department all through the summer as they prepared to launch their supervised remote learning centers. We helped them with job descriptions, setting salary rates, looking at facilities. Matt Hafner worked very closely with Amprodo over safety and cleaning requirements. They were able to staff their programs and opened last Monday. It's been very successful. We've gotten great feedback from parents that are attending in that. They have been able to accommodate the demand of the community with the exception of Wednesdays. There are a few people on a waitlist for Wednesdays because that's the day that the entire district is closed. But on the other days, we've been able to accommodate the need. We do as we outlined when we presented the school reopening plan. We intend to send out a parent survey at the beginning of November, as well as a staff survey to get feedback from families on how things are going. We will use all of that data to identify where we might want to make some shifts to increase and improve the educational services. So that will be coming up. Other than that, our specialists have started to provide virtual instruction in the arts, so that continues to go well. And we have a professional development day on November 3rd coming up, and that will be a planning day for teachers to look at the curriculum coming up and work together as grade-level teams to continue to modify instruction to fit the hybrid and remote learning format. I'm happy to take any questions people might have.
How many kids are still on the waitlist for Wednesdays?
There were six, as of the last time I spoke with Amprodo. And she was actually looking to see if she could secure another site and consider ways to try to provide some sort of opportunity for those parents.
Because we have them at the library on Wednesdays.
Yeah, we have all sites on Wednesdays because we have doubled the amount of kids learning remotely that day.
I'm trying to think if we can fit six more in there.
Yeah, reach out to Anne. I know she was looking at a couple of other potential spots.
I had two questions.
Sure.
Unrelated to one another. But the first one is, the remote learning position in lieu of the math specialist, that's for all students to be able to access support from?
It wouldn't provide support to kindergarten, because kindergarteners are coming every day and seeing their teachers.
Oh, right, no, I just meant as far as like, it's not just for the children who are fully remote, it's for all kids in their remote-
No, it would be for children, it would actually not be for remote learning students because they have access to their teachers on those days. It's for hybrid students on their remote learning days, when they don't have direct contact with their teacher. We are working on structuring that so we would have office hours by every grade drop-in, so if a child's having trouble with an assignment, they could join and get support and assistance on that day.
Well, that's fantastic. Okay. I had another question that I think, looking at our agenda, probably fits best into this discussion, is, has there been any consideration? I'm thrilled we're back in school, and we've made it to mid-October. This is super exciting. Looking down the horizon at Thanksgiving and Christmas, assuming we're all still in school, is there going to be some sort of communication about the protocols around kids traveling, possibly to see family and what the expectations are for quarantine? And then if kids are quarantining, how we treat the days when they're not actually physically in the building?
Great question. There's a communication going out tomorrow about that. One of the things that I've been working on with our administrative team is because there's so much information coming and things are constantly changing, we are going to be sending out a weekly update for parents, and I want to streamline communication so people aren't getting daily emails from different sources. It'll come out every Wednesday, it'll be Wednesday's words, and you'll get an update on anything that's relevant. Obviously, if we have time-sensitive information, we might have to send it out otherwise, but anything that we can hold will come out in a parent update on Wednesdays. The, this week's update that's going out tomorrow evening does address Thanksgiving travel. So the current restrictions for families, if you travel to a higher-risk state or outside of the states identified by the mass.gov site as low-risk, there is a requirement for quarantining upon return. However, that does not apply to students 10 and under. So if you travel with your family out to a higher-risk state, when you return, that as any child that's over 10 would have to have a negative COVID test, and if they choose not to, quarantine for 14 days before they're allowed to return to school. Children under 10 are exempt from that requirement.
In a way, that makes no sense. Like if you think, because like then you would have the one, because I have one that's under 10, and this is, this is-
I had a conversation with another family today where the older student has to be tested and the younger doesn't. That's the public health guidelines.
I understand that those are the guidelines, but when you start to like, actually, this is, this is not a conversation for now.
Honestly, some of these things may be subject to change, but that's the, that's the way it's established right now through the Department of Public Health.
Okay.
So that will go up tomorrow, and staff would be required to quarantine or have a test as well.
Part that age doesn't align with the mask-wearing age.
Well, I just think it's strange that you can, you could have like a bifurcated household. Like you're forcing your older child to quarantine and your younger one is going to school, but then that younger child is at home with their sibling-
Who could just easily have it.
Who is, would in theory be like the source of, and then they're just good, so it, but I will adhere to the definition.
And I'm sure it's based on the data that children under 10 are significantly less likely to contract COVID. You know, they may change the guideline. I also think it might have to do with the fact that many mobile centers won't test younger children. So it might be an implementation issue, but that is the way the public health requirements read currently. And you can go to the mass.gov site if anybody has further questions about that. They update it regularly with the lower states and other information there.
Ingrid, can I ask a similar, not a similar question, but it may be separate from this meeting. With the weekly update or with any communication, for some reason, my husband and I each get different updates. He gets some and I get, and it's, we always have to continually ask each other which ones, and I don't know who to go to to ask what, oh.
That would be Pam, because it has to do with our Connect Ed system and who you list as the primary contact.
That's what I figured, okay.
But check with her if you're not getting, both getting them.
We're not both getting them, so maybe I will, just because I want to make sure that we don't have to keep, I don't want to miss anything, basically.
Absolutely.
Awesome, okay.
And any parent that is not getting an email or is missing something should email Pam, because she can check your contact information in our, our emergency system.
Great.
How's the, I know you're getting ready to touch on this with the bus dismissal, but bus ridership, is that what we anticipated last year?
It is. It's, it's, we have told people at the beginning of the year, once they made their initial decision on transportation, they couldn't change it until November 1st.
Right.
Because it's not easy to adapt bus routes. Ridership is about what we anticipated, about 50% of students are riding and 50% of parents are driving. But again, since we only have 50% in the building at any given time, the overall bus ridership is about 25% on any day. We've been able to accommodate that comfortably. The buses are running smoothly and on time. The parent drop-off lines, that took a little adjusting in the first week. It's just we, we've never had that kind of volume of cars in and out, and we have to, we have to keep kids socially distanced so they can't all offload at the same time. But it's actually been much, much faster. We've been wrapping up dismissal at Freeman Kennedy by 3:15 and H. Olive Day around the same time, so that's almost consistent with what we-
Like the first couple of days were a little hairy, but like, and I'm also just not used to being like a driving parent, so I think that took, that was me acclimating, but it is not bad.
No, it's much, it's almost like it was pre-COVID at this point. It's running very, very efficiently. Yeah. Next is an update. At our last meeting, I shared with you that we are going to be rolling out school dismissal management software. The tech team has to set that all up in the database and has to load in every child's bus route, every child's regular dismissal plans. They're about 90%, I believe she said, complete with that process. The school, yeah, 90%, of the data has been imported. They will work on the remaining 10% this week, and staff training is taking place over the next two weeks. The dismissal software does two different things. First, it allows parents to log into a secure account to change their child's pickup or dismissal plans. So if you have to dismiss your child early, or if you have, they need to take the bus when you were planning to pick them up, you can log into their individual account and change that automatically with a private PIN number. At the end of the day, we will be sending a report, a report close to all teachers confirming all children's dismissal plans for that day, so it automates the process and eliminates the need to send a note to the child's teacher and to the secretary changing dismissal plans. The system has all kinds of safety protocols in place. If one parent makes a change to dismissal plans, then every parent on that child's account will get a notice that the dismissal plans have been changed. It's a program that's been used in many public schools. Charter School in Franklin has used this for a number of years. It's a very reputable and, and strong system. The other feature that this program has is called Fastlane, and that also expedites dismissal, so that when parents pull up to pick up a child, you punch in your passcode and again sends notice to the teacher that you are present and ready to pick the child up. We created a makeshift one that we're using currently, because we knew we didn't have the software right away, but we'll transition to this once, once we have the software up and running. At the bottom of the memo from Trish Kelly is an address that you can watch a video that will show you the key features of school dismissal manager if you want more information. We will also, when we're ready, be sending that link out to parents. It's a parent training, and it shows you exactly how to log in, and will support parents in transitioning to this new process. Again, we hope to launch around November 1st.
With Fastlane, how are you going to keep parents from like keying it in too early?
So there's several different ways you can do it, but one is to have a, you can use either a QR code and have a sign, and when parents pass it, they scan it. We don't really want people to have their cellphones out, but we can also have a sign that says, "Please do not enter prior to this point." So once you pass that sign, then you enter your code. We'll still have people out-supervising dismissal as well, but yes, we can put those, those procedures in place.
Can they hand out like detention slips to bad parents? You could certainly follow up.
If somebody's child comes down and they haven't passed it, you know, and they're on the other ends of the lane, we will.
What are they doing, soccer green, green card, yellow card, and then a red card?
No, they'll just get Facebook shamed.
We definitely will send that in direction, so, because it's a safety concern. You don't want your child called down until you're, you're at the front of the pickup line.
And this has been used widely, so there's no bugs, or bugs have been worked on?
It's been, it's used all across the country, but yes, it's been widely used, and we spoke with several other districts that have had it for a few years now, and, and very positive reviews.
Great.
Yeah. Next is a staffing update. I did share with the committee that we have had a difficult time filling some of the new positions that we've added to support us through COVID, as has pretty much every district across the Commonwealth. The areas that we're struggling most with are substitute teachers, not surprising. We also have, we added two new custodial positions. We added two permanent building substitutes because we knew there'd be a sub shortage, and we had a few paraprofessional positions open. That's natural. Every year, we have a lot of certified paraprofessionals that leave to take teaching jobs, and then we have a couple others who left for other reasons. So when we met last, we were still looking for three permanent building subs, a special education building substitute, a moderate special education teacher, which is a new position we needed to add, because our kids are receiving services, not all in person. Some are receiving services remotely, so we added that position. We had six paraprofessional openings, two custodial positions, a .5 music, which was a late August vacancy, and the math specialist. We have filled a lot of those positions at this point, so currently, we only have two building substitute positions open, and we're in the final interviews with a finalist candidate for one of those. We filled the special education building substitute late last week, so that was after the memo went out, so that's been filled. We are currently looking for one moderate special education teacher and two paraprofessional positions remaining. It was three, but we hired someone this morning. So we have those two positions, one building sub, one moderate special education, two paraprofessional positions. We did fill the two new custodians, they started this week. We filled the new tech support position, and we still have the .5 music teacher vacancy. So we're making good progress. We're down to about four open positions and continuing to aggressively recruit and interview. Any questions on open positions?
Wow, that's great news. That's a lot of work since last year.
It's a lot of work. We're working, we're working hard and we're recruiting very broadly, so that's been helpful. The last thing that I have for tonight is an update on town meeting. The town is planning a special town meeting for November 17th. They're still finalizing details and location. They are considering using the Freeman Kennedy Gym in order to provide a large venue where provide a large venue where they can socially distance any members or citizens that choose to attend. When we went through the budget in the spring and were asked to make budget reductions to the school budget, we were we worked collaboratively with the town and we did have to make several cuts to positions. We eliminated a school psychologist, .5 position. We have eliminated an assistant principal position and we still haven't filled the current assistant principal vacancy because of a budget shortfall. At the time, we said collaboratively we would do that because we recognized revenues were coming in or expected to come in lower and the town only had so much money. But we did ask if revenue came in higher than projected that the select board commit to restoring that money and those cuts to the school district. At this point, the the revenue has come in higher for state and local aid, and that has come in higher by about $180,000. The there are other areas of the town budget that have come in shorter. So when they balance that out and then look at a proportional share, again, the schools took about 50 to 60% of the overall cuts. They're planning to recommend restoring $84,871 to the schools at town meeting. The select board, I think, if those who watched the meeting, they did vote that they would support that if the revenue came in higher back in, I guess it was back in May. So I expect that we will have the support of the board when this issue comes to town meeting. But obviously, we really want parents to be aware that this is subject to vote at town meeting.
Ingrid, what would that money go towards? Would that fill?
It would go to some of the positions. We do want to fill that .5 psych that we didn't fill. We have a backlog of special education testing, obviously additional supports needed.
Mental health issues. I was just talking to my counselor, psychologist today, and she's like, I have a list of 10 parents to call back.
Yeah.
Because of all the there's a lot of dynamics going on.
Yeah. And it's been hard for kids to adjust from to being quarantined for such a long period of time. So that position is something we'd be looking at. We have we have had to add some additional positions because of the current situation. So the remote teaching position, the additional special education position, we, as I said, we haven't filled any of the assistants and neither of our buildings have an assistant principal right now. That is not sustainable, but until we have additional revenue, we can't even fill. We were looking to add last year. So we'd have a full time person in each building. Not only do we not have a full time, we don't even have a half time person now because we've left that vacant because of the budget situation. So a lot of those positions that weren't filled, we we need to reconsider.
But that 84,000 won't cover all of that.
It won't cover all of them. We're going to have to prioritize. We're partway through the year and the school psychologist position was a .5 position.
Yeah, it probably cover.
So it will cover some of that. It will potentially cover the open positions for the assistant principal. We are hoping to use some of the COVID CARES grant to fund part of the remote learning teacher, but that grant expires at the end of December. So we would have to cover the second part of the year salary for that. So it will it will make a big difference. And these are critically needed positions that we we scaled back on because we knew there wasn't revenue. But they that doesn't mean they're not critically important. So.
Right. And when the CARES Act goes away and we don't have the money for the positions that it covered.
Right.
And then we still don't have the assistant principals and the other positions, then we go back to budget.
84,000 doesn't.
Doesn't cover a whole lot.
We had to cut 284,000.
284,000 got cut.
So this is a partial restoration.
So we're going to be in the same boat next school year. Mike?
We will have.
Remember our discussions?
It's going to be challenging.
Year two of this was going to be the worst financial year.
The worst year.
But this was bad enough. Year two is going to be the real fun.
Yeah. But we do hope that that some of the positions we've had to add, hopefully next year, if we're back to learning in a different way, we may not need to carry all of those positions forward to.
Full time, we won't learn. Right. That's.
We'll have a better sense of where that is in the spring.
I mean, I think the good news is that while it's all still not great, it's slightly better than it was before. So.
That's right.
And I appreciate so much the select board's continued commitment to working with us. So it's 84.
84,871.
Schools in Norfolk. Is there any the way that KP gets funded, there's no way they're getting.
No, they can't.
There's no. Okay. Well, I'm happy for our 84,000.
That's right.
Yeah, it's a start. As I think we talked about when we went through this in 08 and 09, we got through it. We'll get through this again. It will be difficult and challenging. We'll figure it out. So and hopefully, just more importantly, if the financials keep trending upward, then hopefully we're in a better position.
To advocate.
Decision won't be as bad as we anticipated them to be in the prior budget season. So we'll have to see how that all plays out.
Precisely. Yeah. I mean, if if we're up this much relative to what the projections were for the rest of this year in the spring, even though next year is going to be the worst year, it won't be as bad as.
Yeah.
Yeah, we hope.
Good. That's all I had tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to King Philip.
We've had a few meetings since our last meeting.
The group is going back this week, isn't it?
Yes.
Today.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you meant we had another meeting. Did I forget? Oh, my gosh. Yes, the students are back on Thursday. Last meeting, we were able to get a walkthrough of the entire building just to see how they set everything up and get a look at some of the classrooms, the gym situation. And they are ready. They are so prepared. They've done a great job. Trying to think about what else we talked about because the tour was a big part of. We approved a budget calendar to talk about FY '22. That's coming up. We also talked about the MASC delegate and alternate. And it was just a lot of updates from Mr. Zini about what's been going on and what they've been doing to get ready to open. And it's a lot of stuff you guys dealt with, but.
Yeah.
Do they have enough staff? Do they feel like staffing is adequate?
Yes.
Good.
They still have some open positions as we do, but they have the core staff.
Yeah, the core staff is in place and they're doing the same thing. They're working towards filling.
Yep.
But it's just it's amazing what they've done. Like each each desk in the gym has a QR code, which which the students scan.
So they know who sat where.
It piles it into a spreadsheet. So you know who sat where and when, how long they were there. And I just see all the I can just picture all the kids in there with their headphones on. It's going to be like weirdly quiet, but everyone's productive. So I think
There's a lot of additional safety considerations middle and high schools have to have because students are moving more than they are in our buildings.
Yeah.
And they have done a great job with their planning.
The hallways are all one way. They're replacing some of the water bubblers with just the bottle fills so that kids aren't drinking from the fountains and just the little minutia things that you have to think of. That's different from what we did here. It's just mind boggling.
And they feel good about it. They feel safe and confident.
Yep. The staff seemed excited about it, that they're ready for the students to come back. And I think it's going to go great.
I've listened to the middle school updates for my daughter that's going there and it is interesting echoing what Sarah's saying like this is it seems very well planned out. Obviously, I didn't get the opportunity to see it, but just in describing it and their plans they have in place, I we feel comfortable as far as with her going. She's got some asthma issues and such. But so your initial reaction is like, yeah, I don't want to do that. But they they seem like they've got.
Yeah, the middle school is even a little different because in the high school, the kids are going to be moving. But in the middle school, the teachers are going to be the ones moving.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
So at the middle school, those kids stay in their classroom. And then the teachers, they set up either the gym or the cafeteria, I can't remember, as like a teacher like central. So all the teacher desks will be in there.
Yeah.
So they have like their own spot. So it'll be interesting.
Dramatic transformations, but they did do an excellent job. Very thoughtful.
Every locker has been zip tied and locked so students can't access them. It's just I looked at Joey's honor. I was like, you guys zip tied every locker? He's like, yep. And I'm like, oh, my gosh.
Yeah, they set a town hall for the middle school. I think it was last week and it was good hour or so.
Yeah.
It was everything you could imagine soup to nuts, expanding the whole process. So you can't fault them for not.
Thinking through.
Putting thoroughness into this. It is is where I would thought. I mean, they couldn't have considered everything. I'm sure something will happen, but they'll figure it out. So I think it's I feel very confident. So they should be proud of what they've been able to do.
Great.
Is that it for King Philip?
That's it.
All right. Policy.
So we looked at a new addendum to the for vaccinations and that would be the flu addendum for the flu vaccination. Basically, it's going to state on the bottom that the Department of Health regulations are now including the flu vaccine as part of their mandated list of vaccinations. So we wanted to make sure that that is clearly outlined in our new guidelines policy. So we'll do we have another reading on that or we?
No, we'll bring that forward to the committee at the next meeting. It would only be an incidental change. So it would be voted at that point.
It's just basically specifying that it will be the flu is part of it. The next one is about the new federal guidelines on harassment. One of them doesn't clearly delineate employee against employee. So we are going to go back to council and discuss how we can add that in because we felt as a subcommittee that it was very important to make sure there was some specificity to employee versus employee harassment. And then the next one that came down, which we also are bringing forth to council, is the new federal guidelines on sexual harassment, sexual assault. And basically adding the new federal guidelines add a lot of regulation and procedures to protect the alleged perpetrator. And for example, if offense occurs off campus, the school is no longer able to get involved or should be involved. It's going to be handled as a police matter. So the alleged perpetrator will, you know, the school can't do anything. Yeah. So anyway, there's lots of new laws coming down on that. We just wanted to talk to council about that a little bit more. I don't know if you want to add anything, Shannon.
No, I don't. I don't think so. I think you covered it. I think just going back and making sure that it's clear. There for me, there was quite a bit of ambiguity and just question around how it's written. So going to council and and just getting a little clarity there and how we can present that.
Yep. So we looked at the model policy that MASC just released. So that's the policy we're talking about reviewing with council. And it came out in response to changes in the Title IX and harassment regulations. So again, we haven't crafted our local policy. We're just responding to the draft that mask produced and we want to get some some further clarity around that. We also will be bringing forward at the next meeting, a new policy that mask released for remote learning. And it recognizes a variety of different circumstances that could trigger a district to have to go to a remote platform, such as weather emergencies, flooding and a bit major problems, structural problems with the building and things like public health situations. And it really just outlines what should be considered when a district is making the decision to go to a remote to a remote setting, as well as the school committee's responsibility for voting on that issue and additional guidelines that should be in place to protect the wellness and health of children. So that we'll bring forward for our first reading at our next meeting.
And we discussed too that pretty much everything in the guidelines, we've already covered.
Yeah.
You know, we already have as part of we already considered as a school committee. So they're just guidelines.
Yeah, nothing struck me as.
Like, ooh, we forgot.
Yeah.
It was really crafted in response to lessons learned from what happened with the COVID pandemic. There's never been a policy or consideration that this there might be a situation under which students can't come to the building. So in response to all the lessons learned across the Commonwealth and implementing remote learning, they put together a model policy for districts to guide future future experiences.
That's it?
That's it.
Semi related. I don't and I don't remember if we've already discussed this. We don't have anything on potential school snow days for this year. We don't have any.
So the.
Any discuss anything as a policy as far as what we would handle how we'd handle that this year?
We did not, although the commissioner has said that if districts have the capacity to provide remote on a on a snow day, that you would not have to make up the day. You could transition. And in our agreement with the union would be that we would would attempt to transition to a remote learning day. The only situation where that might not be possible is if you had a big snowstorm and power was out.
Right.
Those would obviously had to be made made up.
Okay. But in theory, if you had, so you got nine, 10 inches of snow, whatever the case is, okay, clearly.
It powers.
Snow day powers on, it would just be.
A remote learning day. Yep.
Yeah, I would propose maybe a half day for snow days. So that way people could give get time to get acclimated in the morning. That's what I would propose a half day starting.
I'm not making any days up at the end of the year, Jennifer.
You don't have to make up early dismissal day or late start.
What it probably would be is a late start, like a 10 o'clock start.
That's perfect.
Just a delay so that.
I could do that.
Yeah.
You need a little extra rest in a hot coffee before you start.
I look forward to my snow days like coffee. I make pancakes. Don't take that away from me.
I think we've gone down a separate path here.
I know. I think we would consider allowing families time because you have to get the kids set up with their equipment.
Get to get them set up.
You have to make sure they're ready to log in.
Yes.
Yeah. Right, Pam?
Pam gets to sleep in. She's got to make the call. She gets a late start.
Pam really likes when I call her at 4:30 in the morning. Send out a message. So.
She's not actually responding to you when you say that. She's ignoring you.
She is. This is when the masks come in handy.
Exactly. All right. So then we need motions to approve the minutes of both our September 8th meeting and our September 22nd meeting. So it has to be two different motions.
I move to accept the September 8th meeting minutes.
Second on that. Any further discussion?
I move to accept the minutes from September 20.
Hold on, we got a vote.
Oh, sorry. We got a vote. Sorry.
So all those in favor, I guess, of September 8th?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we go to Shannon.
Now, good. All right. I motion to accept the minutes from September 22nd.
Second on that. Okay. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are looking at November 10th. Are we tweeting?
One thing that I just wanted to share with the committee for consideration. So for November 10th, we certainly can meet continue to meet at town hall. I've spoken with Blythe and they're willing to accommodate us. When we meet in person, then the community can't participate in the same way. They have to submit questions in advance. I don't know if the committee wants to consider having some of the meetings be virtual or staggering the two. If we do a virtual meeting, again, people only can participate during the public comment because it's not an open meeting, but they could make live public comments. So it's just to put it out there if there's any interest in considering alternating or having some meetings be virtual versus live.
I I think this is Jen, one of Jen's ideas initially. I like the idea of us meeting live. I think it's just more effective discussion. So unless someone has some other thing, but I think it's a good idea that we keep doing that. If we're asking the teachers to come in and the kids to come in and the parents to commit to that, I think the very least we can do is do that. But I understand.
I I do. But I do wonder if we should consider at least for maybe December and January when with weather, January, February, when the weather might get bad and then we have to reschedule. Like maybe we just schedule the winter months.
Pancakes thing again with you?
Oh, you're referring to we've had some school committee meetings we've had to cancel due to weather.
Because of bad weather. So I'm just wondering if we should just.
So like school, maybe those we could just turn those into a remote meeting.
You have to have 24 hours notice.
Forty eight.
Forty eight.
It has to be posted on the town website.
I don't know. That was just.
If we could make that weather call 48 hours in advance, then oh, well, if it doesn't work out, we can still remain remotely.
Maybe we should just do January, February, remote.
Short term, which the question would be for our next meeting, right?
Yeah.
We're good for live next.
We're good for live. Yeah.
And we typically aren't getting snow. I don't think our December meetings ever been.
No, 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 no. I'm thinking January, February.
You say that now.
And then when it's below zero.
Knock on wood.
When it's below zero and you're like, dang it.
No, there'd be worse language.
Yeah, I'm fine with meeting in person. I was only thinking about the the fact that people can't make a live comment to the committee or address the committee. I mean, certainly they can send a letter. I just didn't know if you wanted to have some opportunity for that.
People feel unable to participate effectively.
It's gotten quieter.
What did they do before?
At least my experience.
No, but even when we were on Zoom or or meet, we didn't allow them to interject anyway. They had the beginning.
They only can speak at public comment.
One time when we had to discuss 1,000 things. So.
When we did the public hearing to talk about the remote and hybrid, we allowed questions and comments, but we communicated that in advance. Otherwise, it's just public comment that people can speak.
And candidly, we haven't had a ton of people coming to these.
This is a return to our old normal.
Yes. We're unfamiliar with company. So.
My KP mailbox is constantly false. My Norfolk one. Not so much.
Once you go to that mass conference, you're going to get all sorts of emails on all the lists.
Hey, make new friends. We'll cover this up. All right. So for the short term, we'll do November 10th with I guess we'll just then go consider it from there.
Yeah.
Also, maybe one of the things if we're going to have a meeting that's particularly short, like sort of the last one, which was a technological disaster for me by blowing water that's all the air fault.
My door stepped in. She.
Yeah, I was completely professional.
No, he's fantastic. Greatest meeting I've ever observed.
Best meeting ever.
That's what I'm looking. Yes, I alone can run the meetings.
The worst part is she came up and like, no, I just did that. And they'll fix it. I was like, of course. So but maybe something like that, if we have something kind of to Jen's point, if there's a short meeting in whatever time, then okay, maybe that's just the issue to do it virtually. So I guess leave the option open.
Okay.
So November 10th does work for everyone?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
That'll be post dismissal software rollout, right?
Yeah, should be.
We might get some.
Maybe we will get some.
And actually, I should have, be able to update you on the parent survey that we're sending out. That'll be great. What it looks like in terms of potential changes to our model.
Great, awesome.
All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn this evening's festivities?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I didn't get to make a motion today.
Seconded.
Do they second?
Seconded.
Okay. So we have further discussion on that. We're all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pancakes.